This early on, notwithstanding the fact that this is just a text amendment and does not require notification of neighbors, is that me? At all, we did reach out to the neighbors before we filed anything. So, we had a neighbor meeting, it was pretty well attended, and one of the primary concerns was traffic. And it was traffic on Holly Lane. And so, we were asked to study, you know, our impact on Holly Lane, our potential impact, and also if there were any, if there was anything we could do to mitigate the current situation. And your traffic study, and Mr. Olman is here, and he can dive into all the details of it, if you would like. But your traffic study confirms that we don't have a negative impact on the level of service during peak hours on Holly Lane, but not with-
Excuse me, I know, everybody's gonna get their chance, please.
But notwithstanding that fact, we also asked Mr. Olman to study the possibility of using Armory as a secondary entrance, and he did that. So, if that is something that this commission thinks is appropriate, we would be happy to implement that in connection with a site plan approval, and it may make sense that construction access would be from Armory at that point.
Do you guys want to dive into questions on the traffic now, or do you want to look at this?
I'm good with this right now, because the traffic's a whole nother thing that I didn't even, I have questions on that, I don't even know if I want to go there. I just have a couple of quick comments, and then I want to move it along to the other commissioners. You mentioned, I know, you mentioned Merit 8, and things are slow, and I did read some reports on how that is a continuing trend, okay? But Merit 8 is getting $21.90 a square foot over there, okay? So, if I was an office person, or owned a company that needed square footage, I would go up the street to the Four Towers at $16, okay? And where I can have a daycare, and I can have my laundry done, and there's tons of restaurants in there, and so on. So, to use that is, I don't know, I have a hard time fathoming that. And the other last thing is, the town of Strafford, since December, has been selling over 33 to 34 houses a month. So, from December to March, we've sold 33 to 34 houses a month, okay? As of last year, February of 2016, to March 19th of 2017, we sold 11, 1,106 houses in this town, okay? We beat everybody else out. We beat Milford, we beat Shelton, but you can't compare them. We beat Shelton by 106, we just beat out Milford. But there's a lot of stipulations there, you can't compare us, the closest town probably is Handham because of our school system. So, I'm getting at, like, you know, everybody's saying, well, yeah, the school system, we, there was a 33% drop in kids, physically numbers, not percent, I'm sorry, I meant 33 kids less from the last study. But with over 1,106 houses being sold, I think we're gonna be going back up. So, I just want to throw that out there, that's all. And I move on, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I just have one comment. So, your developer will sit with the community prior to coming with a proposal?
Yes.
You're gonna work with the community?
Yes, I mean, as you all know, everyone's never gonna be happy with anything, you know, you can't get a consensus necessarily when you have so many people involved, but we will make every effort to engage the community in connection with our development plan.
Okay, that's my only question.
Mr. Rukaskis.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions and a couple of comments. Questions first, you have the income that the town would see through the sewer fees, has there been any check on how the sewer system could handle the capabilities?
Sure, we actually did reach out to DPW to speak to them about that. The application was referred to all of those agencies. They don't traditionally opine at this point, because it's just legislative, nothing specific has been submitted. They will certainly opine when, if and when, a development plan is submitted, and in fact, before we do that, we would sit with them as well, to make sure that we're all on the same page. I know that they were, my colleague Jay Klein was the one that spoke to them, but I believe that they are just now finishing their flow study for assessment purposes, and they said that they did not anticipate any sort of a capacity issue, but reserved the right, of course, to opine later.
Okay, thank you. And as far as the conservation area, would that be maintained in any way, or would it just be wild?
Sure, it's supposed to be maintained in its natural state.
Okay, so, there would be no maintenance?
Right.
It would just be what it is, okay. Then my two comments are, you did say that all we're doing is making, proposing a change in the text amendment, not approving the development, but obviously, by making that change in the text amendment, it makes it a lot more likely that the development could get through. The other comment is, you know, I appreciate you're doing it this way, and actually putting out what you're thinking about doing, because you said you don't want to propose something that the neighbors would hate. I think that when you talk about 300 apartments, neighbors are gonna hate that.
And we hear, we hear the feedback, so, you know, the number of units has already, or the number of bedrooms has already been reduced by the planning commission, and that's certainly something that we would have to consider in connection with a proposal. We hear them.
Thank you.
More questions? Okay, let's do a dive into traffic.
Okay, would it be, would you like a presentation, just a kind of a synopsis of the report? Would that be helpful?
A synopsis, we all got the big thick book.
Did you all get the supplemental letter as well, that compares the 300 units to medical office? We have copies of that. We did a direct comparison.
This one?
Nope, that's my memo. Do you have that one, Jay?
Oh, that was, that was in there, yeah, that's in the book.
Handout copies.
Yeah, it was in the book.
My name is Steve Olman, I'm a professional engineer in the state of Connecticut, I am employed by Alfred Venetian Company, we operate out of Glastonbury, Connecticut, here in Connecticut. I was contracted to do the traffic study for mixed-use development, that's kind of been changing along the way. First thing I want to address is what you just got. This is a comparison of the traffic generation on this site, comparing 300 apartment units as opposed to 110,000 gross square feet of medical office. As the attorney said, that medical office is something that is very desirable these days. I've done one in almost every corner of the state, a traffic site for medical office. In order to do trip generation, we use a document called the ITE Trip Generation Manual. The current one is version, forgot the number, 12, I believe, but it's the most current version. There are different land uses for different uses of the property. Medical office happens to be a land use. There are several apartment land uses. From general apartment, which is from garden to high-rise, if you don't know what you're gonna build.
Sir, just, because everybody's looking at it, just to make sure, your documentation says the ninth edition?
Ninth, that's what it is, it's 2012.
Okay.
That's where the 12 came from, the year 2012, ninth edition.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
I just blanked out. Apartments, there are various uses for apartments, there are general apartment, if you don't know what you're building, high-rise apartment, garden apartment, mid-rise apartment is what I've chosen for this. Mid-rise apartment is designated as an apartment complex that is generally between three and 10 stories high, which matches this development well. I did the trip generation for each use for the AM peak period, a PM peak period, and a Saturday midday peak period. There is no Saturday midday peak period for apartments, for a mid-rise apartment. I assumed the PM, which is higher of the M in the PM, as the trip generation rate, but instead of using a almost 60/40 split in traffic, I assumed a 50/50 split on a Saturday. That means during the Saturday peak hour, as many people are leaving the site as they're coming back. For a medical dental office building, during the morning peak hour, you would have 380 total vehicle trips to that building. 254 of those would be entering, 125 would be exiting. For the mid-rise apartment, you would have a total of 110 trips in the morning, 34 entering, 76 leaving. Notice it's a different split, more people leaving the apartments than entering, more people entering the building, office than leaving in the morning. The difference is, there would be 270 more trips, if it was medical office total, 220 more trips entering, 49 exiting. Go quickly through the PM in the Saturday. PM peak total for the medical office is 317, 89 entering, 229 exiting. The apartments would be 133 vehicles total, 77 of those entering, 56 leaving, a difference of 184 more trips total for the medical office, 12 entering, 173 leaving. On Saturday, medical office would generate 399 trips during the midday peak, 228 entering, 172 leaving. For the mid-rise office, there would be 133 total, 67 entering, 66 leaving. The difference is 266 more trips for the medical office total, that's 161 more trips entering and 106 exiting. Now, this is based on studies done for facilities all throughout the country. They are normalized based on, for medical office building, it's based on the amount of square footage of the building. For apartments, it's based on the number of units, not the number of beds, it's the number of units. Again, these are based on studies taken throughout the country over the years, and they're all normalized to give you good average. They're not exact, the development may generate a little bit more, a little bit less, but they're, they're a place where we start, and it's a standard thing that all traffic engineers use for. So, that's if the developer were to not have the text amendment changed, but to build 110,000 square feet of medical office on the site, that's what the traffic would be.
Okay, I have a question, because I, it is in the book here, and I've read that. Not so much focused on, and I get it, the comparison between medical or office complex and a mid-rise apartment. But if I'm thinking in terms of total volume added to those intersections at peak times, new volume, would I be reading your report properly by saying, for example, PM peak, which is what I often have to live through?
Right.
It would be an additional 133 potential cars coming through? Is that-
Total of 133 cars, 77 approaching the site, and 56 leaving the site.
Fine, I get it, but it's 133.
133 total cars, as opposed to 317.
That's a lot of cars.
It's approximately two cars a minute.
I also read in your report, I kind of cheated, went to the conclusion some time ago, because I actually did read this, massive bed night reading.
Hope you didn't go through the-
That your conclusion was that there was minimal impact.
Correct.
How do you come to that?
Okay, I will go through the study now.
Don't make, mind you-
Real brief.
We're not rocket scientists here, so-
Real quick, I'll go through the study. Traffic study was done, the methodology is, you take turning movement counts at several locations in the vicinity of the site. Essentially, I counted all the intersections along Holly Lane, from the Big Y, Medical Office Drive, south to Nichols Road Avenue, Route 108, then from Armory along Route 108, up through the Route 8, southbound ramps. Okay, so, I counted them for a morning AM peak period, a PM peak period, and a Saturday midday peak period. Those numbers are in the report, I'm not gonna go through them. Then, what we do is, we take those numbers, and the first thing I do is, I grow them by a background percentage. You're gonna have general growth, general things going on, different tenants in the buildings, et cetera. That was half percent a year for two years, to when it's open. That's just the background to increase the traffic. Then, the next step is to come up with a distribution of traffic, of how I feel that the people will approach and leave the site. That is based on two things, one, the actual traffic volumes on the roadway, and since I happen to live in Monroe, and I do a lot of shopping down here, and my doctors are in that medical building, I kind of know the area, so, it just, it wasn't just pulled out of thin air. And essentially, looking at it, it's gonna be about, I assume, 20% to the north along Holly Lane, going back up that way, and then 80% going back down to the highway. That's based on the way the volumes are, you can argue with me, it could be 70/30, it could be 90/10. That's, that's the real touchy-feely part of traffic engineering, but that's what I use, is a 20/80 split, and it seems reasonable to me. Okay, so, then I take the traffic, those in the PM, 133 trips, and I assign them to the roadway network. And just for a comparison, just to let you know what I came up with, is, let's, let's just take the intersection of Holly Lane Mall, CVS, and Holly Lane. Yes, 333 cars, sounds like a lot. At that intersection during the PM peak, southbound on Holly Lane, going through that intersection, that's a total of 22 cars. That's less than a car, that's less than a car every, half a car a minute, essentially. Northbound, approaching the site, because you have more people coming home, is 42 vehicles added to that intersection. That's all. So, that, that's how you do that. The next step is, I take those generated trips that I've added to the roadway network, I then add them to my 2018 volumes that I grew and did, and I analyze that using methodology in the Highway Capacity Manual, 2010 Edition, using the Synchro software. You've probably heard of the Synchro software, it's a modeling software that is accepted by the Department of Transportation.
I've heard of it.
I did a capacity analysis at all those intersections, for all the different time periods. Essentially, existing, everything, all the signalized intersections operate at C or better throughout the day, and the letter designation is just like your grades.
Yes.
A is great, F is failure. For an area such as this, usually we assume level of service D is acceptable during a peak period. Here, it's all level of service C. The only real bad spot on the whole issue is the northbound approach, Silver Lane approach to Armory, opposite Armory. Presently, today, it's a level of service F, but that's an unsignalized driveway, roadway to a heavily traveled road, and that's generally assumed acceptable. And unfortunately, looking at the intersection, you all know it, there's not a whole lot we can do about it. You can't add a signal there, it's too close to Holly Lane. Going then, through, and that's true of the AM, PM, and Saturday midday, essentially, levels of service C for the signals, at worst, most of them are Bs and As, and level of service after that, and level of service C for Armory. For the build conditions, now, I've taken those volumes, I've added my generated trips, I then redo the same analysis, and the analyses show that all the signals will still operate at level of service C, Silver Lane will still be an F, and really, the only change is that Armory goes from a C to a D. And Armory is kind of self-reiterating. If you're, let's say we have people exiting onto Armory. If I were living in those apartments, and I wanted to get onto Route 8 going north, I would consider coming down Armory, turning right, and going up there. Unless I learned that that's a problem, then I'd go out to Holly Lane. And the same is true of coming out of Armory, turning left. If I lived there, and I did that once or twice, I would really think hard about, no, I'm gonna go to Holly Lane and turn left at the signal. Because you'd have good levels of service at the, at the signals. I know it seems congested, I know it seems there's a lot of traffic on there, but I've driven it a lot, and I've driven a lot worse places.
Let me put it to you the way I hear it. If I have a report card, and it's, I'm already getting a C, and I've been getting a C, and I'm now taking an additional class called a building, whatever, and I'm still getting a C, I should be happy?
Yes. The, the way, because the only way to go-
Wish I had human school.
When you're at, well, wait a minute, the only way to go when you're adding traffic to a roadway network, you build anything, you're gonna add traffic to the roadway network, the only way you can go by adding traffic to the roadway network is down. The only way to go when you add traffic is go from a C to a D. There is no way to go back to a B, because you are adding traffic to the intersection. There is, the intersections are designed with a certain amount of capacity, and as you use it up, the level of service goes down. The level of service is really a measure of delay, how much delay you experience. And as I said, for signalized intersections, levels of service D are generally assumed acceptable. On the Route 1 corridor through Milford, Boston Post Road, we're happy with an E.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that, that's, that's what, I'll never tell you that I'm not gonna increase traffic, I'm not gonna degrade the level of service, you know? Logic is, if I have a level of service A, I add one car, it's still an A, but it's going down a little bit. Eventually, it's gonna be a B, and then a C.
Right. You, you have a, you have a tough job here, and you're, you're doing a pretty good job. It, it's a really tough one. And they're cracking?
I don't know which one it is. Is it that one?
Yeah, they're, they actually told us that it was fixed.
Is this mic here?
No, I think it's all of the mics, yeah, but that's fine, okay. So, I think there's gonna be a lot more, I think there's gonna be more questions on it.
Good, to one last thing, that we're in the conclusions.
Okay.
Looking at Armory, and, I wanna, wait, if we have access coming out of Armory, the one thing I would suggest doing is, at along the, get my directions right, the westbound route, and northwest, where you queue back along, in front of Armory, to put in, do not block the intersection sign, and put in the markings for do not block the box.
On Armory?
Simply, it's white paint, four, a four-inch white with X's in the area, to remind people that stop and block the roadway. And that's essentially the result of the site.
I guess the sound gods are not helping us today. Mr. Fuller?
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Mr. Olman, for your testimony. I have a couple of questions regarding this traffic study. I take a lot of exception that we should accept D's and E's, we, it doesn't really set a good tone, does it? I'm gonna be honest with you, I think you need to reconsider your study. We live here, all of us do, we, we commute, Strafford's a bedroom community, we, a lot of people work hard, including myself. I don't think that's, that 80/20 is even realistic, I think it's 99/1. Why? Look at a map, just look at a map, please. A simple road atlas would do, GPS. What's right there? Route 8, if you go into I-95, you're not driving all the way through the center of town to get to I-95, you're going to Route 8. What, where is Route 8 in proximity to Holly Lane? North of it. What is also north of it? The Merritt Parkway. So, if you're going north or south in Connecticut, that's east or west, because we're Connecticut, you're going, if you're going to Stanford, you're going north. If you're going to New Haven or Hartford, you're going north. So, I, I think the study is fundamentally flawed, just by, by this unique proximity. So, it's tough for me to really even, even take these numbers seriously. And then my second question is, the 110,000 square foot medical office building, is that comparable to what's already existing at Holly Lane, at 99 Holly Lane? Is that roughly 110,000 square foot?
Lisa Feinberg for the record, you're talking about the existing building at 99 Holly?
Yes.
It's 160,000 square feet.
Well, that's, that's a little larger than, than 110,000 square foot.
Correct, the 110 was meant to replicate what was approved back in 2000.
Okay, so, if, if this project moved forward back in the early 2000s, and a medical building was approved at that specification, this is what would exist today with that traffic?
Correct.
So, effectively, what you're trying to show is, what would have been to what could be with this site plan, text amendment, legislation-
Correct, right, or could have been built there.
Okay, so, thank you, and that, but that's presuming a maximum build out for the medical, and a maximum build out presumably for the residential?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So, now I have a basis of comparison for, for that. That's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Giuliano?
Yeah, I have a couple. In your expert opinion, okay, is there any type of a fix for this neighborhood right there, on Nichols, Holly Lane, Holly Lane, Huntington Road?
The issue, and trying to think of what improvements that could be done-
It's a good question.
That would really help.
Yeah. I don't know if a light on Huntington and Holly, I mean, that, I know people wouldn't want that, I've-
That always-
You know, somebody has, I don't know if you're familiar with the area, but if somebody has a hiccup on the Merritt Parkway, they jump into 95, and then it starts to rain lightly, and both places are backed up, and when I have to come here at 5:30, I can't get down Huntington Road, I have to leave 4:30, because I'm backed all the way up to Trumbull Industrial Park.
Yeah, I don't know if, I, I know, I know.
But there is no, but there is no easy answer, and we all want economic development, but you have to pick and choose, and-
Yeah.
And you couldn't pick the worst traffic place, and you couldn't pick the worst topography of a place left. I'm not trying to degrade this or anything, I'm just trying to move through this, because Holly Lane, the other thing nobody's mentioning is, it's a one-lane road. When I have to go in front of Home Goods or something like that, I have to, right after Big Y, I gotta cut over, I gotta cut back, and then coming the other way, they're going 90 miles an hour, pulling out a target, you might as well, I don't know what to tell you, I mean, I think there's another big fix right there, I just, just wanted to ask you about your expert opinion on that.
I, I do know the area well. I visit the doctor at the Holly Lane thing every three months, I have no choice.
That medical building's a four-and-a-half million dollar dialysis center, that's gonna be opening up very soon, because they're in there.
I understand the concerns, I really do, I do drive it. The, unfortunately, I think the horse is out of the barn for Holly Lane.
Well, then, we should go to Trumbull, why don't we invite them here? Because they're noted for building right on the line.
The, the issue is that I don't believe there is sufficient right-of-way available for Holly Lane, to widen Holly Lane.
Well, that, that was really what, Mr. Giuliano, my interest was, because in reviewing your traffic report, it's a bad scenario, we all know it's a bad scenario, and I know you're doing your best, but it's a bad scenario. What we're looking at is, if we want, either now or in the future, at some point, we understand where the applicant is at, traffic is a concern, is there something that can be done to that whole intersection, either by the state or by the town?
You're talking Route 108 and Holly Lane?
Yeah.
The issue is that the heaviest moves are the left turn, coming from the highway, going up Holly Lane, and the right turn going the other way. Right now, we have a double left, turning onto Holly Lane, and a double right, turning onto Route 108. If this were Las Vegas, and we had all the land, then it was- If this were Las Vegas, and we had all the land, and it was flat, you would think about doing a triple, left or a triple right. The issue becomes is that that's not really feasible yet here. One, you don't have the right-of-way.
Excuse me, folks, just let him, because we're having trouble hearing-
One, you don't have the right-of-way to accommodate that. Two, the driving population is not familiar with it. So, doing that sort of fix would make things worse. You have two through lanes on Route 108 on each direction. Looking at the traffic volumes, you really don't need more than through lanes in the other direction. It is just a lot of traffic making turns. That is the problem. The one thing that might help is to somehow relocate the Holly Lane Mall Drive.
Holly, say that again, the Holly Lane?
The Holly Lane Mall Drive, the one that goes to Kohl's, Best Buy, and Target. Get that further away from Route 108. That would allow more distance, that would allow more distance for people to queue, but that's something that we can't control, that's not something that anyone, that would be up to, that's private property.
Okay.
No, yes, enough of municipalities. Trumbull, we can't tell them what to do.
Yeah.
Well, that's the other, you know, it would be in Trumbull's best interest, too.
I asked his opinion, and he was gracious enough to give us-
Well, we got a ludicrous answer. It's an impossible answer.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'd like to add one more thing into your thought process. The Merit 8 development has an OSTTA or STC certificate. The OSTTA is the Office of State Traffic Administration. That certificate was granted, I believe, in 89 for the Merit 8 development, for office buildings. I believe it was only approved for Phase 1, but Phases 2 and 3 were discussed at that time. That certificate is for an office use only. So, if anything else, other than office use, goes on this site, the developer must go before the Office of State Traffic Administration, who will be reviewing my work as well, a traffic study. So, not only would you get, you know, to see it and comment on it, you will have to go back for the state traffic people.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for, oh, sorry, I didn't know this is another question. Sorry, Mr. Ocasus.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
The basis of this traffic study kind of bothers me, and I don't know where the numbers go to from there, but it seems that it starts with a flawed assumption. Reading from the proposed text amendment for parking for residential use, 1.5 spaces for each dwelling unit, which is efficiency or one bedroom, and two spaces for each dwelling unit containing two or three bedrooms. That means you're going to have 450 to 600 parking spaces, and only 110 cars are going to be active in the peak period in the morning?
I will address that two ways, if you will allow me. First of all, these studies are based on number of units, not parking. So, parking does not generate into traffic generally. It's the number of units, and people don't all, not all units, everyone goes at the same time. Anecdotally, I will give you my house. Two years ago, my wife was a temp in a city in town, my son worked at an elderly facility, and I worked in Glastonbury. In our house, there were three cars, one house. Zero trips happened during the morning peak period. I leave the house before 6:00, my son started at 11:00, my wife started at 11:00. My wife got home at 6:00, she wouldn't be in the afternoon. My son worked until 7:00, he wouldn't be in the afternoon peak period, and I got home at 5:00. So, yes, there were three parking spaces, one peak hour trip for the whole day. Now, that's, I'm not average, I'm not normal, but that's how it works, is that, the reason I don't really hit the traffic is because I'm driving 60 miles, so I'm not in the peak period, so people living there won't all hit the peak. That's how you justify it. Now, is 133 the absolute correct number? I'm not going to stand here and say, damn it, that's all you're ever going to see. It could be 150, could be 100. But that's the only way we have to go on this, is we use these tables and the equations that are based on historic data.
Well, let me ask you a question, and it would be based on hard data. You were talking earlier about the Holly Lane Medical Building, and that was larger than the 110,000 square feet here, right? There was-
No, what we were talking about with larger is the existing Merit 8 building.
Okay. Do we know what the traffic in and out of there is?
Of the Holly Lane Professional Center?
Yes.
Opposite Big Y? Yes. In the morning, there are five vehicles turning left, going up towards Huntington, two's going straight across to Big Y, 15 turning right, heading down Holly Lane. For the PM peak, there are five vehicles going back up north, two vehicles going to Big Y, 32 vehicles turning right, going down Holly Lane, and on Saturday midday, there was one car turning left, none going to Big Y, five exiting, turning right, entering. There were 34 vehicles turning left in, 14 turning right in.
So, why are those numbers so small compared to-
Well, I don't believe that building is anywhere near 100,000 square feet.
Okay.
They're talking professional building up opposite Big Y.
But I thought when they said, somebody asked about the medical office, but then she answered.
We have, do we have a medical office building on our site?
Are you talking about the existing 160,000 square foot office building on 99 Holly Lane?
Well, earlier, someone asked a question about the Holly Lane Medical Building, and I thought at that point, you said it was 160,000 square feet.
What I said was, the existing building at Holly Lane, 99 Holly, 160,000 square feet-
Which is not medical offices, right.
But there's medical in there.
The 110,000 square foot medical office building was based on-
A hypothetical.
It's a hypothetical based on 2000.
So, but again, I would guess that the actual numbers in and out of the 160,000 square foot building don't-
Well, that's in here, too. The Merit 8, exiting for the office building, the 160,000 existing building, is, exiting the site is 8:00 in the morning, 159 on the PM peak, and 9:00 on Saturday exiting and entering. There are 142 in the morning, 21, 26 in the afternoon, and 4:00 in the Saturday midday for the existing office.
So, again, those are considerably smaller numbers. I understand it's a different-
Right, well, those are existing, and that's just the general office, that's not medical.
Well, there is medical in there, I believe.
Some, but we were talking about medical offices, dedicated medical office buildings, that's where those generation numbers are.
So, is there a large vacancy at the time of this council take, and I understand that 110,000 square foot was the-
I guess, I'm just a big believer in actual numbers as opposed to projections, so there's probably 110,000 square foot medical buildings somewhere in the area that you could do a study there.
We can consider that.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one comment. I just find it very hard to believe that there's not going to be an impact on traffic.
There will be, but it's not going to be that noticeable. That's the thing.
Well, I think over time, it gets adjusted, I understand that. Like you said, you'll go out this way, one, you know, three times and say, oh, I'm not going to do that, you know, when I go out on Monday morning at 8:00. But I still think, but I still think that it's going to have an impact.
There will be.
All these studies say there's no impact, but-
The letter designation is not going to change. That doesn't mean that it's not going to go from an average of 18 seconds to 20 seconds. You probably won't, most drivers probably won't know it, and I'll be lighthearted. I still don't want to drive here Thanksgiving, Black Friday.
Okay. This is what I'm going to do at this point, unless there's any more burning questions. Thank you. I would like to take a very strict two-minute recess, very, very strict two-minute, and we'll come back, and we'll begin with comments from the, it's 9:40, 9:42 we'll begin, and we'll come back with comments from the public. Folks, let's get back.
How many people we have?
Hello, we're going to, to all my wonderful friends, we're getting started. Yes, thank you, if you could take that down. Okay, thank you. I'm sure you all needed that recess as much as we did. All right, this is what, we've got a number of, folks, folks, please, okay, can I get everybody's attention? We have a number of people who want to speak, and we're going to give everybody an opportunity to speak, all right? And we still have an agenda to move forward with. So, here's what I am asking. We have a sense that there may be some commonality in what a number of people think. So, as you come up, I am asking you to hold your comments to one minute. I know that's, yeah, I know. Oh, I know, I know. Try to hold your comments to one minute. Folks, let me speak. I know nobody's thrilled, but we've got a lot of people, and I want to make sure everybody gets a chance to speak. Try to hold your comments to one minute. Try to get your points in as succinctly as you can. We are going to be patient, all right? And I think there will be a lot of overlap in a number of the comments, and we're going to try to move them as quickly as possible. So, please, I ask your indulgence as much as we can. All right, first on the list is Kevin Anadvina Jackson.
I know what I can say.
Oh, you're good. Yes, no? That's the main thing we're interested in, is are you in agreeance or not? That's the main thing we're not.
Behemently in disagreement with the-
Yeah, you need a microphone, please, thank you.
As an adjacent property owner and resident of the North End, we believe that the development of the proposed project would have an irreversibly damaging effect, not only on adjacent properties, but on the town's environment, the character and resources of the entire North End. The proposed development is out of character with the neighborhood. Any residential development of this magnitude is wholly out of character with adjacent properties, and will have a catastrophic effect on the quality of life of existing residents and desirability of their properties. Rezoning this parcel of land to allow for development of high-density residential units on this site is incompatible with the area and constitutes spot zoning. The site cannot accommodate buildings of the size and scope proposed on influx of increased high-density populations without destroying the character of the surrounding community and the quality of life of adjacent residents. In addition, the visual impact of the proposed development due to its massing of buildings and their heightened size would have a devastating effect on adjacent property owners and their values. Okay, Stratford's infrastructure cannot support this development. I sent this letter to the Planning and Zoning Commission, so I'm just going to skim through it very quickly, and I had some other points that I'd like to make. The development will cause undue stress on existing fire and police resources, that issue has not been addressed. The existing school system cannot, contrary to what was communicated here, support increased capacity. The consequences of overdevelopment in the North End already creates flooding issues throughout town, particularly in the South End, and FEMA has redesignated certain areas as flood zones in the South End. And this project will contribute to further destruction of the natural environment. It cannot be overemphasized that the continued destruction of green spaces in and around town destroys the natural wildlife habitat of many of the animals that now inhabit the site of the proposed development. Clearcutting trees and paving over these areas to allow for irresponsible overdevelopment overburdens the resources of the town, further displacing wildlife. And in addition, okay, in regards to zoning, current regulations allow for construction of residential units in commercial buildings. Contrary to the conclusions of the Planning Commission, this does not provide that the converse construction of commercial spaces within residential units is true. Granting a zoning variance for this parcel would allow for construction of high-density residential units on this site, it should not be allowed. Changing zoning regulations simply with the intention of allowing this single development to move forward would constitute spot zoning. Environmental issues, every committee member here should ask themselves the question, is development of this massive residential project on this parcel of sensitive land in line with the preservation and conservation goals of this town? The potential impact of this project should be studied by inlands and wetlands, specifically addressing issues of water runoff and drainage into the wetlands, oil, salt, water, and other pollutants. Noise pollution, lasting effects of blasting and noise from increased populations. Ambient light pollution, and shadows cast by buildings of this size and the effect on adjacent wetlands. The impact of existing drainage on wastewater facilities. Empirical studies demonstrate that residential units produce more than twice the wastewater of commercial spaces. Two-bedroom units conservatively produce approximately 160 gallons per unit per day. This is notwithstanding the increased runoff of the extensive paving that would be required to construct a development of this footprint. The committee should consider the impact of the increased strain on already taxed sewer and wastewater facilities in the area. Traffic issues. I work for some of the largest engineering firms in the world, and I can tell you, what I heard before this committee was a bunch of hogwash, okay? The numbers just don't make sense. How do you have a 300-unit development, and only 100 cars are going in and out of the unit during peak hours? There is no public transportation to the proposed area, so people either have to walk or they have to take their cars. I don't know about the developers here, but in my house, we have three cars, or two cars in the driveway. In the morning, I take my wife to the train station, I come back to the house. My son goes out to the train station, okay? I then take the car and leave the house, okay? That's three trips from one house, okay? Consider the impact of 300 units, okay? School issues, I'm not even going to go into the school issue thing, but the impact of 300 families in the area would be devastating. And just one last thing on property values, while it's not a normal course of business of this commission to consider the effects of zoning on the property values of residents, it was particularly disturbing last week to hear members of the Planning Commission express that there is no definitive evidence that this project will hurt property values of neighboring single-family residents. As a professional real estate agent, I can definitely state that the anticipated increased noise, traffic, excessive night lighting, pollution, and aesthetic deterioration anticipated by this project will make adjacent properties less desirable and hence lower property values. It is what we call in real estate, external obsolescence. These factors usually motivate planning and zoning commissions to require natural and artificial barriers between developments like this and public areas. And I'll just leave this with the commission, but I just want to point out that I stood before the same commission several years ago when Big Y applied for a variance to increase the size of their parking lot by a couple of parking spaces. And this is the result. Placement of a salt storage facility and storage of construction vehicles on the perimeter of the property. Discharge of waste, salt, and contaminants into neighboring residential properties and wetlands. Placement of rusty construction and plowing materials on the perimeter of the property, and destruction of the visual barrier which was required by a court. Storage of excess construction debris, and placement of a construction trailer on the perimeter of the property. This is what I look out of my window to see every day. And garbage and waste from the parking lot blowing over to neighboring properties. I will leave both of these letters and this exhibit with the committee, but I strongly, strongly object to the placement of-
Okay, we will enter those. Thank you, Mr. Jackson, we're going to enter them into the record. I think you covered a lot of ground. I think he covered a lot of ground. Ms. Wolf, Jessica Wolf, if anybody wants to add anything that Mr. Jackson didn't cover?
It's almost impossible, he did a really good job, but I'm going to say a couple of things. I'm Jessica Wolf, I live at 305 Goldback Drive. And I first wanted to say that I honestly don't think that this group heard everything that was discussed in the Planning Commission meeting. I was there, and the report you received and the minutes do not include everything that was said. Chairman Silhavi spoke a lot about the wetlands and the concern about conservation, and I honestly don't think that was clearly enough reported in the information that you have, and I don't think it's been adequately discussed tonight, although Mr. Jack did a wonderful job. But I, you know, I really feel we have to think about the impact on those fragile areas and also the potential flooding, which is a serious concern. I've walked around there and you can see even now, there's water, and the water has a tendency to go somewhere. I'm going to forget most of what I was going to say because it was much better said. But I do want to say also that even, that the real thing before you is a tax amendment, that's it, that's what you have to vote on. And while the prospect of additional taxes in town coffers might be alluring, let's keep the barn door closed so the proverbial horse doesn't run headlong into the so-called Holly Lane Snake Pit.
Thank you. Donna Zukowski? Hi, Donna.
Good evening. I'm asking you to deny the proposed development of SHD Holly LLC for their 300-unit apartment building located at 99 Holly Lane for several reasons. Number one, the area is already too congested. On January 31st of this year, you approved Par One LLC, Attorney Knotts' client, the development for the zoning for the 577 Holly Lane Sedlock property, which is 3.84 acres. Next to that is another 2.63 acres owned by the Tullone sisters, who had inherited the land from their mother and are going to sell to the developer. And there's three other lots adjacent to that property. I have handouts to take down past for people to look at.
Try to get to this property.
I am. But I'm just saying, that's being built, that was approved, the zoning was changed. That's congestion, more congestion. They obtained their CF1 zone permit. Proposals mentioned were retail, restaurant, medical office, even assisted living or a convalescent home. So more than enough development in this area and the road cannot handle any more traffic. Number two, we don't need any more apartment buildings in Stratford. There's more than enough housing available. In fact, the apartments currently available can't be rented out. Avalon Stratford is giving a 5% discount to Sikorsky and Yale New Haven Hospital employees. 1111 Stratford Avenue is offering $1,000 off the first month rent for studios. One bedroom, you get a one-month rent free. Two bedrooms, $1,500 off the first month's rent. Number three, I also have environmental concerns. The impact this proposed development will have on the wetlands and the wildlife that lives there. There's deer, coyote, there's a red-headed woodpecker that's on the endangered species list, there's a snow white owl, there's even a baleenoskunk that comes in our yard. We need to take care of these natural resources that we have as there's no supply possible. I have a list of... Trying to go fast here. And so this proposed development will not be an asset to the town of Stratford. In fact, it's already putting a financial strain on this town. They're talking about the $83,000 taxes that they're already paying. Are you aware that there's a lawsuit by SHD Holly LLC against the town of Stratford? No?
It's a tax appeal.
The property was bought on October 26th of 2015, they knew what the tax amount was. There was no alternations made to the property. Shortly thereafter, you file your appeal with the town, I don't know, how long does it take, a hearing, a month, two months? They had the hearing, and then a letter dated March 31st of 2016, the Board of Assessment denied this tax appeal. And on May 26th of 2016, they filed a lawsuit. Now, how much is the town spending now to pay the law firm of Bertrand Moses and Devlin to defend this lawsuit? It's not going to, this is a burden to the town, this development. And then when buildings get built, I mean additional appeals, I'm asking you to please deny this. Thank you.
Next is Fred Judy Colleser? Colleser, Fred Judy Colleser?
I have there.
Okay. Folks, it's like I said, let's just try to get to the point, yes, no, or no? Your name and address, even though we know you.
Fred and Judy Collesar.
Read by?
Read by Tina Manis, 315 Foxville Road, they're at 300 Fairfax Drive. Opposed to the tax amendment 6.3, they do not feel that changing the zoning for residential directly behind Big Y is in the best interest of the taxpayers. They believe that seeking to add the 300 apartments to the already congested Holly Lane will endanger more roadways and may lead to even changing the wetland restriction. That seems to be the biggest part of their issue. It is an aggressive plan for a small overlay. They want to know about the cost of installing new gas mains, the sewer piece. They think they know the answer will be, that it will be paid for by the taxpayers. Any benefit of additional tax dollars will be offset by the cost of the taxpayers brought on by the whole proposal. The cost the engineers to recommend an upgrade to the developer and all the things that will have to be spent with the town. They'd like electric apartments, but there's no guarantee as the changing conditions of the economy and ultimately the financial responsibilities of the landlord in the town. Looming threat of decrease in property value worries the most. They don't see how adding more congestion will add more fair market value to their homes. The benefits of pouring their hard-earned money for the sake of upkeep will be wasted. And this is the really most poignant thing, I think, that he says. He says, "For many of us, our home equity will remain the largest asset we ever have in our lives." There are alternatives the developers can get, a return on their investment. They don't want, they're saying that renters who have no obligation to anyone but their landlord and not investing in the town. And they mention, and he quotes the Stratford Mission Statement, "to enhance the quality of life within the community," and they say that that's not in sync with this project, with the tax amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Karen Rodea, 2115 Cut Spring Road. Thank you for letting me speak. As members of this commission, you are charged with protecting the integrity of the town of Stratford zoning regulations and the citizens that abide by these regulations and their property. Just a reminder, just because an applicant comes to the commission and requests a change does not change, does not mean you have to grant it. And I respectfully ask that you deny this regulation change. In the case of Holly Lane, the changes in the regulations would be catastrophic. And I drive Holly Lane every day, unlike Mr. Traffic back here. I sit in 20 minutes of traffic getting from Holly Lane just to get across Huntington Road at dinnertime to go home from work. And that is, it starts all the way back, and anybody that's been on Holly Lane will know that. And it's both directions. In the morning, I face the same problem, getting down Holly Lane with people coming out of the condos and the medical and the Holly, and the Big Y and all that junk. It takes me 25 minutes to get from my house on Cut Spring Road to the Merritt Parkway, unacceptable. And adding 300 units with possibly 600 cars, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to know that there's going to be an impact. And anybody that believes that there isn't, I got a bridge I can sell you to. This regulation change is going to have, if you approved it, would have a direct impact on hundreds of families that surround that parcel. The collateral damage, however, in addition to these families, is 52,000 other residents that have to suck up and pay taxes for the additional burden that this type of development causes. And if you think it doesn't cause additional burden, just look at what's going on at Avalon Bay. There's problems down there all the time, the garbage that is generated by the residents that don't care. I mean, the schoolchildren, they predicted 19 children out of 100 and, what is it, 130 units or something? And there's, well, it's triple that. And that's the ones that we know of that are here, real. And that's all I'm going to say on that subject. But anyway, just, the school system cannot afford to have...
Thank you.
...two and three bedrooms worth of, 300 times 300 of children in this town any longer.
I think your point is that you disagree with their numbers on the school system. I get it. Okay. Anything else?
Yes, there is, there is one, I just lost my place, though. Environmental impact, huge, huge. When Big Y was built, as you all, well Stephanie will remember, Conservation Commission almost got kicked off of Conservation Commission because we challenged a conservation easement removal and how it was being done. And what that says with this, and I just was talking to their attorney about this, is unless you have an irrevocable easement, and irrevocable is really hard to get, anybody in the town political body that is on the list, which is town council at the moment, can revoke that conservation easement. State law says that you're supposed to replace it with something of equal or greater value. Our town, no, they did not do that for Big Y, we lost it. And this parcel that they're talking about developing has served as our wildlife corridor that runs from, believe it or not, Roosevelt Forest, through that whole watershed, it comes up Holly Lane and across, and then it goes down to the Snake Pit. And that is all part of one whole piece. So to take that away with, or to not make it irrevocable would be a great disservice. But I do hope that you do not approve this amendment change. And Mr. Fuller, your questions were amazing, thank you.
Ma'am Chair, I have a question for Commissioner Rodea. Mr. Rodea, is it true that you're still on the Conservation Commission?
I'm sorry?
Are you still on the Conservation Commission?
I am, but I'm here on behalf of myself.
But you also are an expert, because you are on the Conservation Commission. Has the Conservation Commission been able to review in any shape or form over in reading minutes or attending a planning or zoning meeting this text amendment?
No, nobody sent us the text amendment.
Oh, that's all I need to know, thank you.
I have a question.
At least not that I saw, and I don't think I missed any meetings, except for the snow day last month.
I have one question, I don't mean to put you on the spot. Do you find that the intersection at Holly Lane and Big Y is greater, because I know you live on Cut Spring Road, than Avalon Bay? What impact did Avalon Bay have on you?
Avalon Bay? Avalon, well, first of all, Avalon Bay, when they come out, they come out of a driveway and there's a stop sign there, but either they don't know how to read or they don't believe that stop, they think it's a suggestion, they just fly out. So there's a lot of near misses every morning, even when the bus is there. And there's several school buses that come up in that direction. That's one area. And everybody seems to exit at the same time in the morning. And it's, happens to, it feels like it's when I'm leaving, but it, there's been days where it hasn't been, you know, but, and they all seem to come home at the same time. So, I mean, as far as traffic, it has increased in the neighborhood tremendously, and I live at the dead end part, and they still come all the way down the road and then turn back and then go back into their apartment complex. Why? I don't know, but that's what they do.
And then the Holly Lane and Huntington Road?
Holly Lane and Huntington Road is an absolute nightmare, in the morning and in the evening, and I drive it five days a week. So I could tell you that it is, at 8 o'clock in the morning, it is horrendous. And at 5, well, I get there about 6 o'clock at night, and it's all the way down by Big Y. So, you're welcome.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to make sure that everybody speaks, don't worry.
The decision before you is simple. Many folks in this town have spoken, I'm sorry, Tina Manis, Town Councilor, District 10, 315 Foxville Road. The decision before you tonight is simple. Many folks in this town have spoken for the people and have championed them. This has led to many, many new faces in town leadership. Promises of new direction and of an end to conflict, of leaders who listen and work for the people have headlined local newspapers and flooded social media. From forest to shore, many of us had worked to gain the public's trust and repair relationships with town government destroyed for various reasons we won't go into now. I am here today not just for my people in District 10, but for the people across town, people who believe in me and desperately want to believe in the hopes so many promised. The 99 Holly Lane amendment change is an opportunity to put words into action and to deliver on promises. While I appreciate all the plans and vision presented within the Planning Commission's recommendation, one pragmatic reality exists. We are slaves to the state and our legislators who have refused time and time again to revisit affordable housing or 830G legislation. You change the zoning, you are rolling out a welcome mat. When I read the newspaper and see Milford bipartisan legislator members cheering when a recent bill to revise the law, and I hear deafening silence from Stratford, it sends a message. I'm further discouraged that this whole government isn't working against us. Where are our state legislators? Therefore, the reality exists that we're on our own. And once the term residency is added to the Office Park District zoning guidelines, the best-laid plans and the most sincere recommendations from either planning or zoning are mute. State regulations trump our local vision. We lose local control. We potentially lose our say. Those developers have been gracious and wonderful to work with, but in life, there are no guarantees. This property could be sold again. This property could have a development that is rejected by zoning. What happens then? Well, state statute tells us, the developer files under an 830G and they get what they want and more. All three sites, including the area for potential development within this condominium complex, are under the guidelines. That's a potential mini-city. Look at what is happening in the TOD. Look at what is happening now. Further developers all over town will apply for the OPD district to allow for this provision. We will see Stratford become something none of us ever bargained for. I'm afraid, they're afraid, we are afraid, and we don't trust government. The trust I have built, the relationships I have formed are shaky at best, and we all need a track record. This is the opportunity to stop this madness. So many of you sit and embrace the friends in TOD who have been ignored and pushed aside. Don't make the show of sympathy and compassion a farce. Don't say you support them but can't do anything for them, and then here where you can do something, pull away any protection we have and sacrifice our local control, selling out our people. That sends a message. It sends a message town-wide. This is your opportunity to truly take a stand for Stratford and deliver on the change in direction promised. First, it was Office Park, then Office Park with Restaurant, then with Hotel, now Residential. Always reactive, never planned, never proactive. That's where we've been. This is the chance to stand up for everyone and against a conservation plan written in 2013 by an untrustworthy and malevolent, untrustworthy and malevolent administration, which is now on its way out. And I apologize to the developer, but this plan does not speak for us. Like everything else done by this administration, it was done to us and not with us. And now it will be someone else's turn this November. We can look toward a better day, you can lead us to something better, but only if we trust you. This whole town is watching. Who are you really?
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, Ellerman? Yeah, I think I'm going to ask him to spell it. Anthony, and I apologize, is it Ellerman, 365 Fairfax Drive? Is there an Anthony at 365 Fairfax Drive?
It's Katherine, actually.
It's Katherine? Oh, my goodness. Would you, could you spell your last name?
Eblamo, E-B-L-A-M-O.
Thank you for this opportunity to be able to talk to...
Could you just, one more time?
Katherine Eblamo, E-B-L-A-M-O.
Thank you.
Most of the concerns is already verbalized, and I really thank Mr. Fuller and Mr. Joliano for all those concerns that he has already presented, including you, Ms. Phillips. The thing is that, you know, I've been in our home for 12 years already, and I enjoy, I have only simple thoughts and simple ideas and stuff, but, you know, I... But, you know, I enjoy the safeness of our home. You know, I enjoy the view that I get from, you know, from the house that it is located right now. And with this development, I see that it will, you know, hinder that. And then, not only that, it will provide a burden for all of us. You know, me and my husband has been planning to like be able to, sooner than later, be able to pay for this. And we bought the house when the market was very high. And at this point, the value of our home has already had declined significantly. But then the tax has been increasing continuously. So, you know, with this development that we're, you know, they're thinking or, you know, hopefully will not push through, you know, will not be a burden for us as taxpayers. Because you know, pretty soon, if, you know, if this will happen, the 300 units, it will really, you know, burden us so much. So I'm really, you know, praying and hoping that you will not approve this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, that's, is it D'Manchi? Jessica D'Manchi? Right? Right? That's what I thought.
Hi, my name is Jessica D'Manchi. I'm at 240 Fairfax Drive. I don't have anything necessary incremental to add in terms of concerns. I think they've all been said by either one of the members of the board or someone out here. What I do want to convey is really my concern that it seems like sort of a numbers game here is being put forward, whether it's with the density calculations and they're talking about calculating these density numbers by including the conservation piece of land. And doing that obviously lowers the density population. But the bottom line is you can't build on that land. So why would it be included in the calculation? It just seems the reason would be to lower the density calculation and therefore make it look a little bit more favorable. They also, last time at the planning meeting, talked about hearing us, and they've mentioned that again before. They want to work with the neighbors and hear what we have to say. And they did. Last time, we talked about our concerns over and over again about the traffic. And they said they would do a traffic study. And that the thought was that residential living puts forward less traffic than Office Park building traffic. And so the traffic study, though, today is of the quality of not using cars to convey traffic patterns. We're talking about units, but the cars and the number of parking spaces in relation to the number of units has nothing to do with it. So it just seems a bit wishy-washy. And so my concern is that once this, if this text amendment were to be improved, we sort of open the doors to who knows what. Something that's harder to deny at that point. Because why would we willingly and intentionally change the text amendment only to then later not approve any kind of proposal put forward?
Thank you very much. I think the last name is Armon Sherman. 9993 Honey Spot Road. No comment? Okay. So, okay, so we're going to put... Yeah, that's fine.
Lou Solomon, 285 Fairfax Drive. A lot of topics have already been covered. However, there's never been any, they talk about $83,000 in taxes right now, which apparently are in dispute. It's going to generate a million dollars in taxes if this apartment building is constructed. The property was purchased as office space property. Okay? What kind of tax dollars would we generate if an office building was constructed there? And how, I mean, is, they're proposing this apartment building with the profit only going to the builder. If it's not going to help the town, what is the purpose of us approving this change? And destroying, and obviously, public interest is against this. If the amendment isn't changed, they can put up an office space. We can still collect tax dollars and it will benefit the town without as drastically interfering with our infrastructure, our schools, our roads. No one even talks about who owns Holly Lane. Is it Trumbull or is it Stratford? It's been a problem for years. That's why there's a million potholes in it. So no one talks about maintenance on the road. Okay? That's just part of the traffic issue. I live on Huntington roadside, so I have to sit in that traffic from Holly Lane or from the Big Y intersection all the way down to Huntington Road every night. 20 minutes to a half hour. And if anyone lives over there, they know that. All right? It's a nightmare. So the traffic is another issue. The 130 cars out in the morning is, from the traffic analysis, that was almost laughable because if you have 300 high-end apartments, that means 300 families or people that have to actually go to work in order to afford to live there. So how do you only have 110 of them going to work?
Folks, let them talk.
So there seems to be a lot of question marks as opposed to answers to what they want to do here, which makes it even more skeptical as to what they want to do in the future. If they can't tell us what they're looking to do now with firm numbers and estimates, this is just getting, we're going down a real slippery slope that I don't think we'll ever come back off of. And it's only going to affect the people in the neighborhood.
Thank you very much. Diane Hints, Heinz, 202 P Street?
I'm going to pass. I'm sorry. I thought this was to speak of the petition. And I'm here for a different...
Not a problem. Thank you. Mary, Maria, Piero. Oh, Piero. Yeah, I can see it now. Ron Piero. Maria, Ron Piero. Hi. Thank you.
Hi. We are residents of Holly Lane for 19 years. And we just wanted to put officially our opposition to this text amendment. We have seen incredible changes on Holly Lane since we've moved here. And we think that Mr. Fuller and Mr. Jackson have really covered off on how we feel. And we feel that traffic will be detrimental if this is passed.
Okay.
I would just like to invite any one of you people to come sit in my driveway anytime at 5:00 or anytime in the morning. It is ridiculous now as far as the traffic goes. And I'll tell you, please come to my house and sit in my driveway and look at what we have to tackle every morning just to get out of our driveway, never mind get on the road. It's ridiculous. And if this goes through, I'm going to spend another five minutes just trying to get out of my driveway in the morning and get home at night. In addition to what we're 20 minutes now trying to get down our road. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the offer. Oh, God. Jim, Jim Kanigizer. I'm sorry for your last name.
Jim Kanigizer, 280 Goldback Drive in Stratford. I echo, you know, a lot of what's been said here. And I'll spare everybody this. Just one point on the traffic. I work from home Tuesday through Friday. And I drive all the way to Sikorsky to get on the Merritt Parkway there. And we want to talk about changes in traffic pattern and that sort of thing. Let's talk about that side of town, too, and what it does to folks that have to get to and from. The other point I wanted to make is that I don't just leave for work at 9:00 or whatever peak traffic pattern is. I drop my kids off at daycare at 7:30. I come back to the house. Then I leave again. Sometimes when I work from home, I go get lunch. Maybe go to Big Y. Maybe shop at Target and make multiple trips in one day. So let's give some thought to that. My last point is, we're the second owner of our home. My home was built in 1964 on Goldback Drive. I know a lot of second owners sitting behind me. I know second owners that live in my neighborhood. They're second owners for a reason. Let's talk about the character of the neighborhood that putting apartments in the shadows of where, and I'll show you a picture of my two children that are being raised in this town. These two kids, they get to look out their backyard at six-story apartment buildings. We're vehemently against this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I think the last speaker... Okay. The last speaker for this application so far is Christine Hartman. And then we'll open it up to see if anybody else wants to speak.
Christine Hartman, 305 Post Oak Road. I'm going to read a fraction of what I wanted to say. Most everybody covered everything. But lastly, and most importantly, in 2015, the developer knew what he was buying when he bought that land. He bought Office Park space. This board has the responsibility to act in the best interest of the town. Zoning shouldn't rewrite the OPD because one developer has buyer's remorse. Zoning shouldn't guarantee one developer's profits at the expense of the entire town. It is not Stratford's job to remedy a bad purchase.
Thank you very much. Those were all the folks who signed up initially. Is there anyone else in, at this point, opposition who would like to speak, who has not spoken so far?
My name is Lyndon Higgins. Mr. Jackson's neighbor. I'm at 45 Plain Tree Road. And I lived in Stratford for probably about, what, 25 years? I just think this does not fit. It just doesn't. Whether I live down Plain Tree Road or not, it just, this is not the town. This is just too massive. Yes, he does have the right to develop and do what he wants with his land, but I'm just against this. And, you know, we covered everything. Traffic, school system, the whole nine yards. And I just wanted to say that.
Well, thank you very much. Anybody else? Can I move on? Is anybody here in support of the application? Anybody here in support? All right. The applicant, at this point, please, you have an opportunity to speak to some of the comments.
Sure. I'll do my best to be brief. I know it's gotten quite late. Instead of going through every individual person's comments, I'm going to try and group them together because a lot of the comments seem to fall into categories.
Thank you.
But if you think that I missed anything, then please let me know. So obviously, traffic is a big one. And you all have been doing this for long enough to know that there are tons of opinions on traffic. You get two different traffic consultants up here and they probably all have different opinions on the same thing. But we were asked to do a traffic study. We hired a professional to do a traffic study. And we delivered a traffic study. And the fact of the matter is, and this is a fact that is well-accepted by all traffic engineers, residential development provides less of a traffic impact than office development and far less of an impact than medical office development. And that's, that's, that's just, that's factual. Impact on municipal resources such as sewer capacity, we've already touched on that earlier. But just as a, to reiterate, when we come in with a development plan, this application will be thoroughly vetted by the folks that specialize in vetting these types of applications. We haven't provided those details because we don't have a development plan. We felt like providing a conceptual plan would be beneficial to everyone to get an idea of what theoretically, to just have this very discussion. But we have not proposed a development plan and therefore they have not reviewed a development plan. But I'll tell you that these are the people that received the application. This is the referral. And this is straight from your zoning department, the police department, the fire department, the building department, the engineering department, the health department, the conservation department, Public Works. Everybody received it. And none of them provided comments because this is a legislative act. This is your purview. It's not their purview. If and when we are able, well, when we submit a development plan, because let me, let me say this, to be clear. My clients purchase the property. They own the property. They are not contract purchasers. There's no out. They will develop the property with something. The only question is, what will that be? So when we come back in with a development plan, it will go back to all of those departments and they will opine on the impact on municipal resources. The environmental issues, the wetlands. There's an inland wetland commission for a reason. We have to go to them before we go to you. They will, they will tell us if there are any concerns. We have, there are setbacks that we have to comply with. And there's a 17-acre conservation development. I mean, this is a 25-acre site and 17 of those acres have already been dedicated as conservation land. But the rest of it is not park. It's a development site. And if it's an office, whether it's an office building or a residential building, a building is going there. One gentleman spoke about looking out his window at a six-story residential building. Well, is it better to look out your window at a six-story office building? I don't know. That's an opinion. But in my opinion, a luxury apartment building would be preferable. Schools, I gave you, I think we've exhausted that. I gave you an enrollment plan. I quoted all of the numbers. There are going to be differences of opinion. Character of the neighborhood. While the east and the south of the site are surely developed with single-family homes, the north and the west of the site are not. This is a very diverse neighborhood. And you're, you know, Ms. Manis spoke about the 2013 Plan of Conservation and Development and how the administration basically wrote it. Well, let me tell you what the process was for the approval of the Plan of Conservation and Development. There were two interactive public workshops, four focus groups, and an online community survey as well as a public hearing. Was not passed in the dead of the night. And I'm sure if you spoke to the Planning Commission, they would tell you about the exhaustive amount of time that they spent on it. This is something that the community was invited to participate in. If there were folks that didn't participate, I'm sure there were, that, you know, that's not the fault of the process. The process was thorough. And a plan was developed. And developers and property owners who are coming into this community rely on that vision. That is the vision of this town. That is the calling card to people like my client who think that Stratford wants development. If that's not the case, then the plan, you know, the plan should be changed in the next, you know, seven years when it gets renewed. Just really quickly check my notes to make sure I've kind of covered. Spot zoning, that's a term that people like to throw out regularly. But it's something that is studied in the case law over and over again. And there are two specific requirements. One is that it has to relate to a small area of land. And the other is that it has to be counter to the Plan of Conservation and Development. The Planning Commission is charged with determining what is, what is in conformance with your Plan of Conservation and Development. We have a letter from them opining that this is in conformance with the POCD. Therefore, by just the very nature of what's required for spot zoning, it wouldn't apply. But notwithstanding that, if we were to accept that concept that making a change to this regulation is spot zoning, that the proposal to change the regulation is spot zoning, then any change to the OPD would be considered spot zoning because there's only one OPD. And that just can't be the case. Flooding issues, again, that'll be vetted by your very capable staff. But I can tell you that right now, it's, the property's undeveloped. When a development goes in, there'll be a very intricate civil engineering system put into place. I think that your council has already opined to that, that, you know, simply allowing a residential use does not make you any more susceptible to 830G. You know, Stratford is at 6%. You have to be at 10%. So until you reach that threshold, you're susceptible in any zone. That's not what we are proposing here. I think, I think that essentially covers it unless any of you think that there's something that I didn't address.
I just want to go over what...
Sure.
Real quick, there, these numbers are still good. These numbers are still good. It says that there's 34 acres. It's still the 34-acre site we're talking about, with 25 which are undeveloped, and approximately 17 are undeveloped, dedicated for conservation. So this is all we're talking about there, then. I just want to make sure that... Well, we've had issues where they were different.
Sure. And that's, I mean, those are round numbers, obviously. You know, 34 points.
Yeah, we've had other issues. I just wanted to double-check to make sure this is...
Okay.
Thank you.
Just before, Madam Chair, if we're going to close, I just want to make sure that the boards make it into the record, and I think, Mr. Van...
Yes. I think, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. We do have a couple of questions. I see here some hands. Mr. Fuller.
Yes, Madam Chair. I don't know if this question more for the petitioner, but a clarification question for staff.
If you give Mr. Hibaski a second, come back. If you're okay, I can answer until he comes back. Is there another question?
No, it's really about the definition of spot zoning. That criticism has been levied, and I think it's an important one for the commission to consider.
Just give him a moment. Ms. Peppin, did you have a question? Mr. Rakuskas?
Well, I did just want to ask one thing. One of the speakers tonight raised this issue, and I honestly don't have any idea. If this were offices, would the taxes brought into the town be lower, higher, the same?
I haven't studied the taxes. Do you know that?
I'm sitting here looking at...
This is Jerry Kylie, one of the owners of the property.
The owner of the property. So two things. I'm glad you brought up taxes. It was the only thing I was gonna pop up for. They pay roughly $300,000. Okay? One thing I just want to bring up, because it was brought up in a little bit of a despairing way. Real estate taxes, appeals, you do that based on, someone says you have a two-car garage, you have a one-car garage. You've heard it said over and over and over here that Unit 1 has 160,000-square-foot office building. And you heard that in 2000, our property was approved for 110,000 square feet. You can see they're different. The taxes, the assessment on Unit 1's land is $2 million. The assessment on ours is over $3. Anyone in this room would file a tax bill. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr.? Mr. Hibaski, we do need you. There's a question from Mr. Fuller.
I didn't hear the question.
Oh, yeah. I didn't formally ask it yet, too. I wanted to make sure that you were situated first. One of the members of the public, I believe it was Mr. Jackson, had a critique that this potentially could be spot zoning. For the public record, what, how would you define, as a planning and zoning professional, what would constitute a spot zoning?
Spot zoning would basically be legislation that would apply to a singular, small piece of property that is tailored for, well, not necessarily tailored for one project, but it's basically zoning, it's also considered island zoning. When you have one zone, let's say, for example, residential all around, and you take one little property in the middle, and you change that zone to something else.
Industrial, commercial, whatever it might be.
Yep.
What constitutes a small? And how is that determined?
Well, you know, I really, in my opinion, I don't think spot zoning would apply to this, because it's not that we are, or it's not that the applicant is necessarily proposing They're not proposing something that is... How do I explain this? Let's see. I think part of the confusion is that OPD district is currently only in one area of town. I think that if the OPD district was proposed for, let's just say hypothetically, across the street in...
Yeah, in Strat...
In Stratford.
Lordship.
Or down in Lordship. And there was a change to the, and there was a change to the text for that zone, would we consider that spot zoning as well? I wouldn't.
Because we have multiple properties under a certain designation.
Exactly. So although the text that's being changed may produce some other development down the road, which I think we think it might, it also applies to all the other properties and all the other lots and condominiums that are a part of this property. So it's not for just one project, in my opinion.
And is it possible, too, that, say, whatever the zone might be, whether it's an office park zone, residential zone, whatever it might be, we have a certain zone or a certain set of rules in town? And then over time, those pieces by piece, they get changed to be contiguous with neighboring zones? Like what we did with turning into a commercial property just down the street on Holly Lane? Is it possible that eventually you do get one property if you chip away enough of that zone through decades of zone changes?
Absolutely. I mean, it's certainly possible.
And I'm just still, I'm not saying this is large enough or small enough to trigger a spot zoning situation. But I'm just asking more kind of in a general sense. Just based on professional experience, what have you seen to be kinda like the size, like footprint threshold of the property or site plan is large enough to be not considered spot zoning?
Yeah. And my, I really don't think that it really, there is a threshold. I think it has to do with, you have one block that's all residential, and someone in the middle wants to build a office building in the middle of it, and they say, "I want to change my one property here to office park zone." That would be spot zoning.
So it's a spectrum, whereas a clear side of yes and no, and then, again, gray area in between of something? Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make sure that we, as we deliberate, that we know what spot zoning could be.
Madam Chair, may I? Just one comment. Just to be 100% clear, the Connecticut case law is 100% clear on what the elements of spot zoning are, and there are two. One is the point that you were just making, Mr. Fuller, related to the area that's being changed, or impacted, rather, by the regulation change, has to be small, and small is subjective. The other is not. It is, the change has to be in conformance with, or rather, it is not in conformance with your Plan of Conservation and Development, and that decision has been made here. I just wanted it to be...
Thank you.
Totally clear.
Is there any other points that you would like to bring forward, and either to respond or otherwise, any other members of your team?
I think we're all set, if the commissioners are all set.
Any other questions from the commission? Okay, at this point, then I am gonna ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Mr. Rakuskas, second by Mr. Fuller. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for your time.
Chair passes, says yes. Thank you very much for bringing forward, and everybody who came for this particular We're gonna move on to the next application, which is the 99 Honey Spot Road, numbers 5 and 6. I'd like if we could take both of those together. Just give them a moment so that people can clear out.
Yeah, I'll wait till people clear the doorway. Yeah. Yeah. I don't, I just wanted, because a lot of people throw it around. Well, that's why I always, oh, this is interesting. And that's, and also, we're presuming of everything in there, right? It's four years later.